I'd like to call the December 8th meeting of the Penfield Board of Education to order. Please rise and the district clerk will lead us in the pledge.
And pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A motion would be in order to approve the agenda as submitted for December 8th. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion being ordered to approve the consent agenda, which includes the approval of the minutes from the November 17th meeting, the acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, the acceptance of the recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, the acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, the request to approve the recommended bidder for Douglas Equipment, the request to approve the recommended bidder for New Wave Energy, the request to approve the recommended bidder Regional Distributors. And that is it. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And now with the Treasurers Report, as recommended that the Treasury Report be approved. That includes the cash report, general fund cash report, general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending October 31st, 2020. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And now special reports. I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam for special reports.
Thank you. We have two special reports this evening, and I'll have Marty Morrow, one of her many roles is our Medicaid Coordinator, and she is going to do our annual Medicaid Compliance Plan Recertification Presentation to the Board, and she'll be followed by Dr. Leslie Maloney, our high school principal, who will be doing our annual PHS Course Selection Guide. We'll talk a little bit more about that after Marty's presentation. Marty, thank you very much for being here.
You're welcome. Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight. I'm the Medicaid Coordinator for Penfield, and I'm just going to review the most recent updates for Medicaid. There we go. If you don't know, the SSHSP is a program that gives school districts access to federal monies for Medicaid eligible services. Struggling with the clicker. There we go. And so, any students that are Medicaid eligible, that receive services, that are also Medicaid eligible, they will be able to receive services through the district, and we can submit claims to collect on those. In Penfield, we have a Medicaid Compliance Committee that consists of Barbara Gregory as our Compliance Officer, Scott Dreschler, our Director of Special Ed, Bill Maloney, our Treasurer, and myself. And we meet quarterly to review best practices, review our compliance plan, and also discuss any Medicaid alerts that come up during the school year. So if any of you have any concerns over waste or fraud or abuse, you may contact Barbara Gregory or the Office of Medicaid Inspector General to voice any concerns. There are 10 services that are eligible for funding, and the top three are the ones that we bill for in Penfield because the bulk of the services are designed to run through medical offices that have processes that really don't align with the school district. So these three, PT and OT, are the ones that are most conducive for us to submit claims for. We are trying to get some other services billable through Penfield, but it hasn't happened yet, and with everything else that's going on, it's just not something we're going to be accomplishing right away. The first thing that we have to obtain to be able to submit claims for Medicaid are parental consents. Parents have to agree that we have access to their students' medical insurance through Medicaid. If they provide that consent, we can bill for that. If they don't, we just let those be. There's an Oprah program, which is individuals who order, prescribe, refer, and attend services for the Medicaid program, and it's basically a program that keeps track of providers' credentials and makes sure that we're up to date with their information. All of our speech pathologists are enrolled, and I also have to check that for every provider that works with our students. So there's speech language therapists, PT and OT, they have to be certified and licensed in New York State. They also have to have an NPI number, which we'll talk about. If they don't have that, then they have to have the credentials listed and work under the direction of someone who's certified and licensed. The NPI is a national identifier that is similar to what we would use a social security number for, just is a HIPAA regulated number, and it is used on every transaction that a provider uses. Then there's an exclusion list, and that's a list of people who have been pulled off the Medicaid provider for services, and we have to check new hires and anyone that has been susceptible to fraud or abuse in the system, to make sure that none of our providers are on those lists. We also have to annually get an agreement from partners like Mary Carriola, who we hire out to provide services to our students. All the claims that we submit require all this information, and these items are things that our software system, Frontline, helps us to keep track of. So these student client identification numbers in there, the parental consent is kept track of in there, the IP with the related services are in there, and so we just have to make sure that all that stuff is lined up and okay for billing. And Frontline is a decent system, you know, we've been using it all along. It's really worked well to streamline our process. The last thing is the Medicaid Cost Report. It starts out with these random moments, which is basically an email that anybody can, any of the providers can get at any time, and it's supposed to just document what they're doing at that moment in time. And our providers are very conscientious of it. They always reply, we get 100% response, which is what we're looking for. It's typically due at the end of the calendar year. They're a little behind right now. It counts all students receiving Medicaid eligible services, not just Medicaid eligible students, and it also tracks any staff that are on our payroll that provide services, as well as the list of providers that our partners, including BOSI's, provide for our students. And it keeps track of all the administrative costs involved. That's it. That's all I have for you tonight. Do you have any questions?
Board, any questions? Kathy?
Hi, Marty, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I'm a little unclear about parental consent. So if there are services to be provided, then you contact the parents, correct? And then ask for the consent in order to get the reimbursement, right?
Yes.
Okay. If they, did I hear you correctly? If they don't give the consent, then what, we don't get paid for it?
We cannot, Bill. We cannot submit those claims through Medicaid. So some parents are just uncomfortable giving us consent. It's a one-time thing. We try to get that consent when students first come into the district, because that's really the best time to get it, when they're starting out.
Yeah.
And most, most parents do consent to it, but there are a few that have just been through the timeframe of when it was all up for, you know, there was so much confusion over the last few years about Medicaid and getting services paid for, and it's, that's just not the only aid that we get. So they just want to make sure that it's not taking away the ability of their student to get services outside of the school district.
Okay.
And we, you know, we've gone through extra measures to try to explain to parents that, you know, the services that we claim for are only those that are occurring during the school day, and it's not going to put any kind of impact on any services that they would be able or be eligible for outside of the school day.
Okay, because that's probably some of their hesitation.
Yeah.
But the services would not be withheld. They would still get the service.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Catherine. Any other questions or comments? Lisa?
I have a question. Hi, how are you?
Hi, good, how are you?
Has, I'm assuming we're having some students that are receiving qualifying services that are virtual. Has that changed our ability to put claims in?
Yes, so initially, we, our system wouldn't handle it, and we had to get the state to allow us to provide services remotely. And so there was this whole process in March and April of, you know, organizing all of that. So now the system allows them to identify that it's a telehealth visit, and the services, I mean, I think the providers have gotten much more comfortable providing the service that way. It's amazing what they do over the computer and how they manage that, but they're able to do it pretty well. So between having the system set up to document it and the providers getting acclimating to just a very different way of delivering a service and getting, you know, the state and federal governments to agree as to what's, you know, appropriate, it's all really come together. We did make an amendment to our compliance plan to allow for that delay of them first putting those notes in because they didn't, they didn't know what to do. So they just, they tracked their sessions initially on paper, and then once the system got up to speed and all the guidance was available, then they were able to back, go back and put all their notes in and everything. So it didn't really follow the rule of contemporaneous as our typical session notes do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just before you leave, Marty, I will just say thank you very much. I know, I know that this assumes much of what you do, the Medicaid piece, and it's a lot of bureaucratic red tape and, but we appreciate everything you put into it and coming out on a cold night to present to the board. So that was pretty good you got two questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our second special report is Dr. Maloney, who is going to be giving an update on the PHS Course Description Guide. I want to share with the community what I shared with the board is typically at this meeting, the high school comes to present new courses and, you know, what's different in the Course Description Guide, and then per our practice, the board later in the meeting would have the ability to approve the Course Description Guide, because in January, and Dr. Maloney will talk a little bit about the timeframe, they'll get into the scheduling of students for next year, because we start building schedules now. But just so the community's aware, and I shared with the board, is that as with everything, COVID has thrown some of our timeframes out, so the high school under Dr. Maloney is still working to finalize the Course Description Guide. So tonight is a presentation, sort of an overview of some changes, and then once it is ready, we'll share it with the board via the email link, and then the first meeting in January, we'll have the board look to approve that. But any of your questions on the Course Description Guide, ask Dr. Maloney now, because she won't be at the first meeting in January. Well, unless you want to be here. You're always welcome. Everybody's welcome.
It would be.
You might be.
Is something happening that I don't?
I'm just trying to get you, I'm just trying to get you a night off. So I just, but this is the typical time where we talk about the Course Description Guide. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
You're good.
Yeah, I'm done.
Because do you want to talk about the course?
I could, I really could. It's been, this is always my favorite presentation as a principal, but I think it's been enough time that I'm going to not even say a word.
So as with, so much with the pandemic, I feel like this presentation could have a completely different title, maybe Lessons from August, Lessons from the Pandemic, What Have We Learned? And, you know, it feels, well, we've been in school almost 15 weeks.
Wow.
I know, when you stop and think of it from that perspective, in some ways, it feels like August and the reopening plans and all of that was yesterday, and then in other ways, it feels like it was two years ago. But so much, we've learned so much, and in developing this year's master schedule, what we realized is that we have to be able to pivot, and we have to be able to pivot with no notice, with a week's notice, with, you know, as you all know, it changes on a daily, sometimes hourly basis. Tom will say, hey, oh, here's something new, different from this morning. So in terms of being able to plan and look forward to next year, while we are incredibly, incredibly hopeful that next year we will be in, back to the traditional instructional model, we do need to plan thinking forward for the hybrid model and the 100% virtual model. So that being said, and we always develop, work to develop a schedule that focuses on preparing all students to be college and career ready, but I think it's important for the board to know that we are working with students on a daily basis and really supporting them through the change. You know, so many kids have plans from when they're little kids for whether they're going to go right into the service, or they're going to go to this college where mom or dad went, or, and plans are changing, and families are having, students are having to change their plans, families are having to change their plans because of the pandemic. And so that really, we have to maintain that focus on preparing all students to be college and career ready, but we also have to acknowledge that that looks a little different right now. Many of our students are postponing, taking a gap year. Some of our students are saying, you know what, I think I'll stay close to home so that I can live at home and maybe attend virtually. So keeping that in mind, you know, we always have the college and career ready as a focus, but it has to look a little different. And then adhering to your goal, the Board of Education goal of fiscal responsibility, and how do we truly maximize our staffing with student enrollment, while also potentially preparing for another hybrid model with the social distancing piece and really maximizing not only space, but the class size. And then, as we discussed when Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Buddington and I were here a few weeks ago, the feedback, families have been so, students, families have been so great about sharing feedback through this entire pandemic, and actually, some of this feedback has been, has been coming for, for a few years. Honors courses, this actually came up at a shared decision-making meeting a few years ago, and it's continued, the feedback has continued to grow around, is there truly a difference in our honors courses? How do we decipher an honors course from an AP course, from a dual-credit course? And the question around equity, whether it be equity across racial groups or socioeconomic status. So we've really been digging in and honing in on that, particularly with all the districts' work around equity. And then inclusion of students of all abilities. I know when Winton and I were here talking about our action plans, we talked about that transition and supporting students, the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade is so critical, and I commend Jen Lerner and Winton Buddington on their work implementing the direct consultant and indirect consultant teaching model at Bay Trail and really providing students with more opportunities for inclusion. And so we have been talking for a few years on how can we, those students have been at Bay Trail, they've had those opportunities, how can we continue those opportunities at PHS, and what does that look like? We've been meeting and working on this, and it's, it's really exciting to think about some of the opportunities that we can provide students. And as normal, I start talking, and then I get excited, and I give away the whole presentation in the first slide. Okay. So our action steps, really taking a look at how can we minimize Singleton course offerings by prioritizing electives. One of the things that we discovered in August, when we had to make some really difficult choices based on the guidelines that were put into place for reopening, whether it be around the social distancing, or we ran into some staffing situations, as you know, right at the, right at the end of summer. And so instead of, and I think people are confused when I talk about this, so I like to use an example. So instead of offering a class of 12 and a separate class that has maybe 28, we offer the same class and only one class that we can combine and have two sections of 20. So it's really focusing on that minimum enrollment number of 15, class enrollment number of 15, and how can we maximize that? Another, this is, again, a learning experience from the pandemic, providing school-wide enrichment opportunities based on student interest. We, and very thankfully, Beth Coys, our librarian, has been offering an honors portfolio option for students in our 100% virtual program who were unable to earn their honors credit because we weren't able to honor, offer honors courses through 100% virtual. And that course has been going so well, and we've realized, we, and again, maybe this is a lesson from Bay Trail and their school-wide enrichment model, how can we provide more opportunities for all students to access enrichment opportunities and access higher rigor, self-interest, those types of activities? And then again, as I mentioned, researching the best practices and expand the continuum to provide those inclusive experiences for students with disabilities, and at the same time, maintain acceleration, dual-credit and AP options while phasing out the honors courses. So what that will look like moving forward for next year, we piloted this year in English IX. We did not run an English IX honors course, and moving forward, we will be not offering honors courses in ninth grade. That being said, we, so I want to use the example of physics. So physics this year, and the physics department have been working on this over the past few years, the physics regents numbers, the class enrollment numbers have been getting smaller and smaller. And we had a teacher retire in August, and we were unable to fill the position, and the physics, the physics teachers had made this suggestion, and we were actually planning for it for this upcoming school year, that we, there really wasn't a need for physics regents anymore. All students would be taking the physics honors curriculum. So we, with the retirement, we opted to move forward and do that this year, and we've seen great success with that. So all students will be taking the honors curriculum. So while I say we're phasing out the honors courses, I probably should have put, while doing an analysis in terms of our curriculum, and are there courses that all students can be taking at the honors level? Again, here I go, jumping ahead of myself. So the change is by department. Let me break it down by department. So in English, as many of you know, we take great pride in our English 12 semester-long electives. We have tried over recent years to lessen the number, and it is very challenging because we offer such a wealth of courses. But we looked, took a look, and really, we can support six of the semester-long electives along with AP literature, and we believe that that will allow us to maximize that 15 minimum enrollment number. So we took a look at student interest. What are the courses that over the past three to four years have been running with the highest numbers? We looked at offering dual-credit options, so there's College Comp, there's the AP Literature, and really tried to, again, prioritize so that we can, because of fear, what happened this year is having to, we get into next year and having to cut some of the Singleton's, not offer them late in the summer. So we're really trying to plan ahead. And then expand our offerings in English IX to provide inclusion for students with disabilities. And we're still working on what exactly that's going to look like, how we're going to do that, but I had a fabulous meeting today with Mr. Dreschler and Mr. Buddington, Jen Lerner, Emily Buss, and Claudia Ditko, who's our department chair at PHS, and I'm really excited at what we're going to be able to provide for our students with disabilities at PHS. In math, we have been offering college statistics, which is a dual-enrollment course with MCC, as well as AP Statistics. So it's important to remember that at any time, any student can challenge any of the AP exams. So what we've been seeing is students have been really enrolling, the number in the, of enrollment in the MCC class has been increasing, and some of the students will opt to challenge the exam, but we found we don't, we really don't need to offer both courses. In fact, this year, we're offering both courses, but they're taught during the same period. Next year, we'll also offer Calculus Honors, which is a dual-enrollment course through Supa, and not offer College Prep Math. College Prep Math, we've been running for the past three years, I believe, and we really thought that that would take off, and it hasn't. We haven't seen good numbers in that. Our Supa course has really been strong, and so we're going to keep that course and not run the College Prep Math. And then again, the other area where we're going to be looking to provide more opportunities for inclusion is going to be in algebra.
Dr. Maloney, before you go on math, because it comes up again, could you just remind the board and community what Supa stands for?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Our Supa courses are, are courses that are dual credit through Syracuse University. So it's Syracuse University Project Advance is what the Supa stands for. Continuing on, our physical education department, I have to say, I am so proud of our physical education department. They, life gave them lemons and they made lemonade. They, you'll, I'm sure you guys have seen, the students are mountain biking, they're doing orienteering, they're doing, they really, they took the teachers that are teaching in a class at a, during a class period of time, and they split the kids and they do all sorts of activities while adhering to the guidelines that are set up for PE. And in terms of the 11th and 12th grade electives, they often create Singleton courses. So again, by offering an 11, 12 course, which is what we ended up doing at the last minute over the summer, by preparing ahead of time, we won't need to do as much shuffling. And students will be able to, they'll know right in advance that they'll be taking that 11, 12 PE, will hopefully be maximizing that 15 class enrollment minimum. Science, I don't, I'm not sure if you recall, but we offer two forensics courses. We currently offer Supa forensics, which is the dual credit through Syracuse University. And then we offer an elective forensics course. And over the past few years, our numbers in anatomy and physiology have really been increasing with students interested in some of the medical fields. And our Supa forensics, we really have, the enrollment has been declining and we're running into a situation where we don't have a teacher who has been trained to teach the course. And so the science department is extremely supportive of this suggestion. They'd like to see the anatomy and physiology grow. And we will be keeping the forensics course, which is not dual credit. The other piece, AP environmental, we have been putting in the book, the course guide for a number of years. And we noticed that it almost itself runs on a biannual rotation. And maybe in order to maximize the enrollment, we should listen to the kids. As Liz Smith from the social studies department always says, the kids talk with their feet in terms of which courses they, they want to take. And so we're going to be putting there, there's a chart right at the beginning of the course guide and we'll be listing AP environmental as one of the biannual courses. In social studies, so college board is making a change. And as some of you will recall, we've, for a number of years, we've offered pre-AP world history. The course is changing and it is really an acceleration option. So it's taking the AP world history course and it's, in the first semester, basically the easiest way to think of it is, in the first semester, what we typically teach in ninth grade, that's all taught in the first semester. And then in the second semester, they begin the AP course. So moving forward, we would offer AP modern world one. And then I noticed I have a mistake on the slide, I'm so sorry. At 10th grade, we would be offering AP modern world two. The name of the course is actually changing. But at both ninth and 10th grade, we would not be offering the global one honors or the global two honors. Special education, we talked about the inclusion in algebra nine, excuse me, English nine and algebra. Technology, we realized, we had a number of courses in technology that had low enrollment. And we, so we did an analysis and we realized that we were probably offering too many. And with only one technology teacher, we did some maneuvering and realized that we could offer less courses and still allow students to complete their project lead the way credential, which will hopefully maximize the enrollment. So computer integrated manufacturing, when we looked at the enrollment, was the course that made the most sense to not offer moving forward. Our business department, on the other hand, has been growing, it's, it's crazy in terms of the growth in our business department. And our Microsoft Office course, we actually need to, we can start running it more frequently for students who are on the career and technical education pathway. So we're going to be able to run it every other year. It's been one of those courses we've kind of run when there's enough interest. And now it's ready to go on the biannual rotation opposite of business management. So that's exciting. And then world languages. What we found is our world language, our level five courses often cause confusion for families. The courses, actually both are level four and level five courses are MCC dual credit. But students and families often think that the only way that they can access that college curriculum is through the AP courses. And the AP courses, it's, it's rare that they have enough enrollment to meet the minimum. So again, any student may challenge the AP exam. We're thinking that we will include a sentence in the description that says that, that students may challenge the exam, and also rename the courses so that it's clear to families and to students that these are dual credit courses. The course selection process, it's very similar to the past, but yet like with COVID, there's some differences. So next week, we'll be publishing the course guide to the website. And as Tom said, you guys will get the link. Advisement period will be the 14th through the 22nd. And what happens then, teachers really work to sell their programs, sell their courses, make recommendations to students in terms of what they should be taking. And then we're going to be using our seminars, our grade level seminars to do scheduling presentations. Over the last few years, we've been doing an overview presentation for students. It really allows for the counselors to do an overview of courses, answer general questions. What's so exciting this year is the counselors, I give them a lot of credit, they took head on figuring out how to use Microsoft Live, which for those of you who aren't familiar is really a webinar format of Microsoft. So the students can tune in and get their, they post their questions and there's a team of counselors in the background that are answering the questions. There's another team of counselors who are presenting. And it's really, they've done an excellent job with it. And so those presentations will occur through grade level seminars, we'll be letting families know. Counselors will meet individually with all students in grades eight through 11. A communication will be emailed home outlining the course request so that families know. It allows families one more opportunity to make any changes. And then we lock down Infinite Campus in order to build the master schedule, usually in March. And as in the past, we will continue to limit the drop ad process for the first two weeks of school. This year, because of COVID, we had to really hold to that even longer than the two weeks, unless a student is obviously missing a graduation requirement, they're looking to increase the level of rigor for the course, adding an additional class. I mean, there's always, we always take each situation individually, but we don't just, it's not like college where you can just come drop ad, drop ad and all of that. So questions, I apologize, I talk, I, I just get so excited about, about PHS and courses. And so I could talk all night. So I will stop and answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Maloney. Board members, any questions? Really?
Well, I'll have a question, you know. Hello, how are you?
I'm good, how are you Lisa?
Do you foresee phasing out honors moving forward? So you're like phasing out at ninth grade and then 10th grade, you know, sort of so that students that are on honors track that are older can continue and then are younger students coming in would have these different options?
Absolutely. We're really looking at it exactly as you said. And you, you actually use the term track and that's what we're trying to do is, is revise those tracks so that students have more opportunities. But we will phase it in so that students who aren't currently in the track, their track doesn't go, you know, off the side of the table.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to say, I find it very refreshing that we're taking a really hard look at all the courses. You know, what happens in life is things kind of grow and expand and, and you know, something seems a good idea here and there. And once in a while, you've got to stop and look at the thing, look at it as a whole and really look at what's important, what's meaningful and what's the most beneficial with our, with our limited resources. And I applaud you for doing that. And it sounds like you worked this in conjunction with the department staff, really got their expertise in there, putting you looking at enrollment, looking at engagement, which is really making sure we can be as efficient as possible, but at the same time, making sure the students get what they're interested in. And I also thought it was interesting that you talked about the business department increasing when it was just a few years ago, we were getting feedback that it was just not, not meeting the needs. So that's great that we got that input, we responded to it and it's actually, it's actually getting the engagement that, that it was, that was out there. So again, I think that's great.
Both teachers are working towards their work-based learning certification, which is awesome. In fact, we're hoping to be able to offer work-study in the spring. So it's really, yes, our, our business department is just doing a fabulous job.
Thank you, Dr. Maloney.
Thank you all.
So I can't let you go yet because I still have to talk about the high school, even though I'm not in that role anymore. But the two things I want to share with the board, especially our newer board members and, and as I listen to this, I've heard this presentation three or four different times now, so I'm aware. But I heard something new, which I just think is important, and it's around forensics. So if we go back and Dr. Maloney was probably the, the math department chair when forensics really took a boom, not just here, but across the state because of CSI. I mean, it was a TV show and kids loved forensics and it became interesting. And then things changed and anatomy and physiology really is, really being built at the, at the high school with incredible teachers and the work from the department. So it's just interesting. So I always look at it as it's not, maybe not having a class, but it really is new opportunities and it is students. And I give our ELA department and Dr. Maloney a lot of credit because we always offered many ELA courses, but in reality, it was terrible for administrators and counselors because then we would have to tell students, well, there's not enough kids in that class you want, so we have to drop it. And so by narrowing, still having choice, but narrowing it a bit, it really allows us probably for students to get their first or second choice and not have to have those conversations about courses being dropped. So there really is, it's a change, but it's really a positive change. And the same thing with environmental science. We used to have AP and a number of sections of, of sort of a regents level environmental science. And over time, students aren't interested in that anymore. It shifts. And so I just, really just wanted to say that so I could say thank you to Dr. Maloney, her staff, the department chairs, the directors, who've really dug into this, done a lot of work and, and really look to make some positive changes. It's a great place, but some great changes to really bring us into, into the post-COVID world. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that, Dr. Putnam, because I, as you were, as both you and Mark were talking, I realized I didn't get a chance to thank, the department chairs did an amazing job, along with their supervising assistant principals, the directors. And we, we, it really was a collaborative process. We were able to have, dig in and I gave choice and allowed discussion from the departments. I asked for their feedback and that's really important. I think particularly now in this COVID world, oftentimes we're like, oh, we just need to make a decision because this, you know, someone says we need to do this and because of this and that. And this really was collaborative. And I reviewed the presentation with the department chairs yesterday and everyone left happy and that really, that really meant a lot. So yes, thank you for saying thank you to them. I will say thank you as well.
And I would like to talk about modern history because as a former history teacher, I'm really excited.
Oh, I thought that, I thought that was two with the CSI and the English.
Thank you very, very much.
And I just want to say, it was nice working with you because we're not sure you're going to be here in January.
Yeah, apparently after the holiday, something's happening that I'm not there.
Now you have to come to the board meeting in January.
That's the point.
Oh my goodness. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes special reports.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. So now we're at visitor speaking time. This is the designated time for district residents to bring their comments to the board. The board encourages residents to share their opinions, voice their concerns and offer suggestions in a constructive atmosphere. Mattering matters involving particular individuals or specifics of negotiation are not permitted during public session and should not, and should be addressed privately with the board president or superintendent. Comments brought to the board will be taken under consideration, however, this is not a time when the board can answer questions or engage in dialogue. A request to speak form must be filled out prior to the start of the meeting and given to the district clerk. Speakers are expected to identify themselves with their name and address before presenting and limit their comments to five minutes or less. The board president reserves the right to limit the total amount of visitor speaking time based on the length of the agenda. And of course, written communications to the board are always encouraged. And with that, we'd actually have someone who's come in. Thank you, this is Nicole, and I'm helping here, Birdulis. Now please come on down and thank you for coming and speaking for, to us.
My name is Nicole Birdulis. I'm a resident of Penfield. I live at 134 Milford Crossing. So tonight, I'm coming actually with some gratitude. There's some parents that are in some social media groups and just residents of Penfield that our children attend Penfield schools. And we've contacted Dr. Putnam to ask him if there could be consideration and if they could analyze some information to see if we can have more in-person learning for the hybrid learners to be able to attend on Wednesdays. And we just wanted to come, I'm speaking on behalf of others and myself, and we're just, you know, very thankful that it's something that you're even going to consider and analyze. And you know, it's, it's just something that we were not hesitant, but like maybe a little bit nervous of what the response or what the answer would be. So we are definitely appreciative, you know, if, if that could be obtained. And you know, we know that you have the students' best interests, so if you can do it, we're confident that you're going to all make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Nicole. As you, as we are always interested in the opinions and comments and input from the community because you know, that's how we know what is important to the community. And we do what we can to, to address those or honor them, you know, and, but we will always listen, always listen to them. So thank you. Were there any other speakers today? No, thank you. And I'll introduce Abby Jackman, our student representative for the student representative report.
Hello, everybody. It is that time again. To start things off, at Penfield High School, many fall sports teams had very successful seasons. I learned that the boys soccer team became the section five AA champions, go boys. The girls field hockey team also helped raise money at Eastview Mall for the Salvation Army. At Cobles, third grade stu, third grade students were taught a lesson from Second Step, a program rooted in social emotional learning about bullying. At Indian Landing, in art class, kindergarten students explored how artists use lines in their artwork and experimented with lines themselves. And from today, December 8th until December 17th, Indian Landing is having their Helping Hand initiative where loose change in non-perishable food items will be collected for families in need. At Harris Hill, third grade students were able to complete a gas trap experiment where they created miniature clouds. I did that in elementary school and it was awesome. And students also were able to model erosion in landslides and see how canyons form. At Scribner, many students wrote uplifting messages to be seen in the hallways. And lastly, for district-wide news, the SEPTA Book Fair is running from December 5th to December 10th for elementary school students. November 25th was Thanksgiving. Pick My Kid was implemented as a way for parents to complete health checks. Pick My Kid was implemented as a way for parents to complete health checks for their students before school. I know my mom is glad. And for the Penfield Education Foundation, they're having their yearly fundraiser to support student scholarships. Thank you.
Good, well, thank you very much. Any questions for Abby? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Putnam?
Sure, we have a few reports tonight. I have a brief student and staff honors report, and then we'll give some overviews, Penfield Central School District updates around COVID athletics and some other things. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl, who will give us our annual reserve fund plan, some budget updates, and business updates. All right, so congratulations to all eight PHS varsity teams for earning recognition as New York State Scholar-Athlete Teams for the fall season. I won't read all the teams, but they're all of them from our fall season, and they're in the agenda. But very great that we focus in on our athletic, our athletic, our athletic participants, but we really see them as student athletes. So students first, and athletes, it may be a close second, but the fact that they do well in our classrooms are critically important. Fall Signing Day is always an exciting time, even in a COVID-filled world. So congratulations to the PHS athletes who participated in Fall Signing Day. These are students who are signing on with colleges as they will continue their athletic careers in college. And while I won't read, all of the names are in the agenda, as well as the college or university they will be attending the, this year because of COVID. It was outside, social distance, in the fresh air, and pictures were allowed, but only with family members if they were unmasked. But it was a very nice event. And I'll get into updates now. The first really is a COVID overview. So just so the community's aware, the board knows, I meet with all the superintendents in the Monroe County, or Monroe County School Superintendent Group, once a week. We meet twice a week, once a week with Dr. Mendoza and occasionally Adam Bello. And so this is an update, which is amazing to me, but we all know it, is that our region's infection rate is seven times what it was in September. So the fact that school protocols continue to be considered the gold standard and it's because we're requiring masks and six-foot distance, we're cleaning on an ongoing basis throughout the day, especially after school, over the weekends. There's a lot of work that gets put into this, a lot of education, especially at our K-5 schools on, on washing hands and using hand sanitizer. Although I will say I can't wait until, sorry to name a name, but we get Purell back because most of the stuff is just smells terrible. But we continue to, continue to focus in on keeping everybody safe here. However, I wanted to speak to the community, really from a conversation from Dr. Mendoza today around what they're really seeing nationwide, probably globally, but we're only worried right now about Monroe County, is precaution fatigue that is happening in our community. Seventy percent of the new COVID cases are being linked back to small parties, gatherings, and homes. It's getting cold, so people are moving inside and feeling comfortable with the people they know and are friendly with, and therefore feel, well, they're probably not COVID spreaders. And nobody means to be a COVID spreader, but really, this is the time to hunker down and use all of our gold standard protocols when you're not in school. I can't stress enough how, how important that is. I know I have no, no authority outside of our district world, but I just wanted to share that, that this is a real concern. People are getting tired. We've been doing this a long time. And, but at the end of the day, that infection rate is increasing at a rapid pace. And we are working very hard to keep our schools open, even as the infection rate rises because of all the protocols we have in place. And I just thought it was interesting, is the first vaccinations arrive in Monroe County later this week. They're working through that. They're giving through New York State a small number of vaccinations to each county so they can really work through their process and their system. And that's what Dr. Mendoza and the Monroe County Department of Public Health is doing now. So hopefully more will come with that. And specifically to Penfield and COVID, we remain in yellow, the yellow zone right now. So as of today, there's no further in-school COVID testing required. I do get requests that we should be testing everybody, that we should continue to test. We, we are only given the test by the state through the county when they deem it's time for us to have them. So right now, in the yellow zone, we don't have any tests. They are waiting for us for when we go into the orange zone. And based on the regional infection rate, we're actually closer to red than we are to yellow. But we will most likely be moved to orange soon. I, I lost a friendly wager that it would be Monday. So we're still yellow, but based on our numbers, we'll be orange. The orange zone, as, as a community I'm sure knows, is that that comes from the governor's office. So it's, you know, we, we can't deem ourselves orange or yellow, but we wait until we're told. When we become orange, there is new rules, and I appreciate the advocacy from a number of groups, including superintendents and board members in terms of, on a statewide level, that it used to be orange zone meant we had to close. We no longer have to close. Schools can remain open even in the orange and red zone. However, we have to do 20% random testing of building staff and students every month. It's a little bit more prescriptive, is that we have to do about 5% a week because the goal is to get truly a distributed sample of all buildings and grade levels. So that, that's by executive order. We'll have the tests. We just give kudos to Kathy Harris, our nurse coordinator and Scribner nurse, and the entire nursing team who have devised a plan. We're ready. So if we go orange, we will have Alan McNiff and his crew pick up the tests, and we will be testing as soon as we get them. We've got a plan in place. We will test at all six schools under the yellow zone. We tested only at the high school and middle school. But now we've been told we'd have to make sure that, that sample is more distributed across the entire district. I will just say, so the board and community knows, is that who we test is also in that executive order. So it's based on buildings. And so buildings and grounds, bus drivers, transportation, district office, we don't count in that number. And so it really is only people who are building-based in, in our six school buildings. I've also gotten a number of requests for others to be tested, but will only be given probably the 20% test with not a whole lot of wiggle room. They give us a little extra, but I can't just test people. However, anybody in Monroe County can go through the website and go through MCC, go to the Department of Health, and you can schedule a COVID test, even if you're asymptomatic, if you're interested in doing so. But schools can't do that. As a reminder, just when I talk testing, I know it scares people. I have had a COVID test. It's not, it's not the most fun experience, but I will tell you, I will take one of those over a strep test any day of the week. We do not give that COVID test. We give the rapid nasal test. It is, it is swabbing the inside of each nostril, five seconds each. Most students, even probably our older, like our fifth grade, can do it themselves. And if not, then the school nurses will be giving all of these tests. Our nurses will be giving all of these tests. Very, very easy, and, and not painful, not intrusive, very easy. And I've spoken to a number of students at middle school and high school. I was there for most of the testing and, and not a problem at all. So please, if you have questions, please let us know. We can talk through that. And I share that because we need consent. So we're not going to just test people. We need, we need consent for our students, from our students. So we're asking all Penfield hybrid families and Cohort C students who are here, students with disabilities who are here more than, more than not here, to complete a consent form for each child via Infinite Campus. So this email came out from Infinite Campus, and you log into Infinite Campus, and you fill out basically a survey, which is the form for each one of your students in Infinite Campus. As of this afternoon, we have an 89% consent rate, but we only have, we have less than 63% of the surveys have been completed. So, you know, we got about 60% of our students who have consented one way or the other. Eighty-nine percent have consented yes. So the parent guardian consent form can be found in the Infinite Campus parent portal. And we also, so people who didn't fill it out yet got an email this afternoon saying, please do this. And then Nancy Bradstreet sent out our direct communication through our typical email, another email reminding people about this and giving them the link to the Infinite Campus portal, so you can log right in. We do realize through this that there are families who don't know how to log into Infinite Campus. Everybody should be because you can see lots of data in there. And as minute you hit middle school through high school, you can see your child's teacher's gradebook. So you can see exactly where they stand. You can also see attendance. But if for some reason you don't know how to get into Infinite Campus, don't be embarrassed, don't be worried. Just call the main office of your child's school. They will give you the password. They'll tell you, tell you how to log in. We'll get you into Infinite Campus. If for some reason you just can't get into Infinite Campus, just, just email, just email the building principal. Email me. We can take the email and make that, and check you off in Infinite Campus. But, so two pieces. One, I realize through this, we need to do a lot more work with parents about how to get on Infinite Campus. But right now, I'm just really worried about that consent rate. So 89% is actually, is actually higher than we were for yellow zone, but, but lower than where we'd like to be. So the three districts around us that were moved to orange, their consent rates are in the high 90s. And the more people who consent, the less burden it will have on everybody else. So that 20% can't be kids getting retested. It really doesn't have to be everybody all the time. The old orange rules was by the end of four weeks, you had to get 100%. That rule's not there, but it simply means the less people consent, it might mean students or staff have to, have to take an additional test. Not right away, not back-to-back, but the more people consent, the better. And the more people that can consent actually gives us a real idea of what our COVID infection rate is. Under orange zone rules, and we're still waiting for some legal on this, but if our in-school infection rate is above, above 3%, we're going to have to close. And then it's also at schools at, at a specific number of how many could be considered positive before we have to close. So we're working through that. We'll be ready with that information to share once we become orange. But I think I've said it enough, so just one more time. Please make sure you fill out your consent form. And if you are cautious about it for any reason, just call me directly, email me, talk to this building nurse because they're the ones doing it. It really is, it's very easy to do, and it will help us, it'll help us in lots of ways, but especially to stay open. Let's talk about something else, athletic updates. So still COVID-related. The state has deemed a number of sports low risk, moderate risk, or high risk. School districts, board members have no control over that. The following low-risk winter sports are underway. Nordic skiing, bowling, boys swimming and diving, and modified. It's our first modified sport of the year because we did not run modifieds in the fall. We postponed them. Modified boys and girls swimming and diving. So that's actually combined, and Pittsburgh is the same way. So we've got boys and girls modified swimming and diving together. The following winter sports are under review, and that is indoor track and field, and then basketball, cheerleading, ice hockey, and wrestling. It's important to note that basketball, cheerleading, ice hockey, and wrestling are considered high risk. So there is really, those are on full pause. We have no update on whether they will be able to run this year. We're, you know, monitoring, we're listening, we're waiting. Indoor track is not considered high risk, but there are still a lot of questions about indoor track. And so we're holding on that as well, as is all of Monroe County, until we get official information that we're hoping to receive before the end of this calendar year. So the district right now, in terms of instructional program requests, the district is currently reviewing the student requests that were due last Friday for parents or guardians asking to change their children from remote to hybrid or vice versa. I can tell you that, without giving you specific numbers, we did not have a very large, we had, we had a decent number of surveys returned, but I had nightmares for a while that it would be like a thousand kids wanting to change, and that did not happen. So we think we can make this work without impacting teachers and schedules. We, we're working on that now. And we're working through the process to reschedule students either from hybrid into a virtual program or virtual into a hybrid program. We hope to have that done in the next couple of weeks. The district is also reviewing the current hybrid program to determine possible modifications as we look to January, and also the start of second semester February 1st. So we are reviewing, based on this data. We couldn't dig too deep into changing our hybrid until we knew how many people wanted to change. If we had 500 students who wanted to change to virtual, it would, we'd have to throw, every, we'd have to reschedule every student. And we talked about this the last two board meetings, that if everybody moves, it would have to, it would have to change. We don't have, you know, the real teacher's teaching, they're not being taught by computer. I also want to mention here is that our instructional program at hybrid is very unique to Penfield. We like to do things uniquely. So when I, when we look at our K-5 program, what we heard loud and clear from our surveys in March and summer is that parents missed and students missed the face-to-face with, with adults. So in in-person days, teachers are with their classroom teacher in a special, two days. On Wednesday, it's an SEL check-in for both cohorts to come together. On Thursday, Friday, or Monday, Tuesday, you're, you're at home. You are logging into Zoom or Teams, and you're seeing a teacher. It's not all day. It's, it's, it's shorter time periods, but it's not just asynchronous work. So there are some districts where you're in school two days, and then the other three days, you don't log on, you don't see anybody, you're just doing packet work or following along in, in the text. So every district's instructional program is different. Nobody is exactly the same. But I, when we see others, I really like ours in the sense that it has our instructional specialists who are working around the clock. They're doing incredible job. They're working with the classroom teachers so they can talk about which students are, are struggling, which students are, are really needing some enrichment. And then they're working that into their RTI periods and their, in their full cohort classes. So there's a lot of work that happens on Wednesdays. And so we are definitely working on what we can look, how it can look different in the second semester. But we also know that every change has a number of factors that go along with it. So I appreciate the community understanding that. I'm glad folks have reached out. We're definitely looking into things, and as soon as we have some, some real answers, we'll be reaching out to everybody and letting them know. But I do appreciate that. And just a partnership is one of the board, three board goals, and one that we take seriously. The Penfield Education Foundation, as a reminder, was established way back in 2016, where nobody talked about COVID, by a group of community faculty and parent leaders who believe that education is at the heart of our community. And it's a private, nonprofit, tax-exempt organization. The foundation will raise funds to support grants for innovative programs that aren't supported through the district's own budget, and to support the awarding of scholarships to further the education of Penfield Central School District students. And so I just wanted to mention to the board, in our, in our goal of partnerships, is that the Penfield Education Foundation had, was able to provide two grants this year, this fall. We'll do it again in the spring. $600 was granted to second-grade Scribner teacher Tricia Marinick for the purchase of literature that supports culturally responsive teaching across grade levels, looking at sort of like classroom libraries in every classroom at Scribner. And then $500 was granted to sixth-grade Batrel teacher Kimberly Rice for the purchase of flexible seating options for sixth-grade students. So those teachers don't know they're getting a grant yet because I thought I'd tell you first and then email them this evening. And then the foundation also, this is where, I actually, I wear two hats. I do sit on the foundation as the district representative, and this is one of the reasons why. Lots of reasons, but this is why, is that the foundation received four technology-related grant requests that came to the foundation. We reviewed them, and I looked at them and said, let me talk to Jason DeLorenz, our director of technology. I think we can cover all these through our budget. They weren't asking for too much. They were directly impacted on instruction. And Director Technology said absolutely. So even though they put the grant into the education foundation, the district picked up the cost for these because they, they were in line with really a need and not a want. And so that was a thank you to the district for that as well. You're welcome. Okay, so that is the end of my update. Any questions before I turn it over to Dr. Driffl?
Board members, questions on the superintendent's report? I just have one question. What is a flexible seating option?
A flexible seating option is flexible. No, there's, right now, if you think about it, like we're sitting in regular chairs. Especially, we see a lot at elementary, and then it's really growing at middle school, too. So there are, they're really funky. They're, they're all different. There's many different kinds you can. So I'll tell you one, a beanbag could be a flexible seating option. But a lot of these are designed for schools, so they also meet all the school safety procedures. So there are some chairs where students actually wrap their legs around, and their legs go like sort of underneath the chair and they sit on it. I wish I had a picture to show you, but when we're in our elementary schools touring, if you look, a lot of our elementary classrooms have some sort of unique way, unique chairs. And maybe it's not every chair, but if they get a couple in each classroom, they can, they can share. And maybe it's not every chair, but if they get a couple in each classroom, they can, they can share them. So it's really for kids who, and adults, who maybe need to sit on something else. The one that's really popular, especially with some of our older students, is the yoga ball chair. Have you ever seen this? A yoga ball, but it's got back support on it. Um, those are flexible seating options. Um, we've used these before in other areas. Uh, some of the high school classrooms have them in middle school too for, uh, some of our students with disabilities, but they work across the board where like they're taller and they're sort of like a swing on your feet, so your feet can swing while you do work. Um, that's why we have a curtain here because my feet are all over the place during these meetings. So flexible seating options would be great for me. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
And it goes back to sort of the student choice piece. So that's really a great, that's a great want, right? It's not, we can't outfit every classroom with flexible seating options. We do sometimes buy it through the district budget little here and there. But for the, for the, that's why the Penfield Education Foundation, one reason why we're here in order to be able to say, hey, you need something now, let's try to get you some. And if they really like them, they'll work through their, uh, building principal, their budget to maybe add some more if the students really enjoy them.
Good. Thank you.
So I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl now, uh, to talk about, uh, annual reserve fund plan, budget updates and business updates.
Thanks, Dr. Putnam. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So a couple of, uh, business office updates tonight. First of which is the twenty-twenty reserve plan. And then we're going to look at a couple ongoing budget updates and then a quick pivot over to facilities, kind of some of the ongoing capital project work. So a couple of years back, the state did make it a actual requirement that boards of education need to adopt, uh, an annual reserve plan. So tonight you have the full reserve plan document in your board packet, which will also be made available, uh, to the public. That goes really into detail, looking at each reserves, um, authorization, purpose, history, uh, what happens if the reserve goes away, five-year balances, so on and so forth. But tonight we'll just kind of have a higher level, um, discussion. So back in two thousand nine, uh, GASBIE, GASBIE, if you don't know, is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Uh, they were started in the mid-eighties. Um, they are the sister organization to FASB, the Financial Accounting Standards Board, which oversees the private sector. So they issued statement fifty-four that just updated the terminology and the rules around fund balance classifications. Um, so we currently use these four fund balance classifications in our annual audit. So the first of which is committed, um, also known as non-spendable. For school districts, this is primarily, um, things that we've issued, issued purchase orders for at the end of the fiscal year and just hasn't, haven't arrived or the services haven't been rendered. So it gets carried over into the next year's budget as a committed, uh, cost. Assigned fund balance used to be called appropriated fund balance or previously called the fund balance to reduce taxes. So that's the amount of fund balance that you allocate towards the next year's budget as a way to supplement, uh, revenue so you don't have to raise taxes. Unassigned fund balance used to be called unappropriated fund balance. Um, and this is, uh, the one we hear a lot about, that's the four percent cap. It's the four percent threshold of the following year's budget. So for us, we have a hundred and two million dollar operating budget this year. Four percent of that is a little over four million dollars. So in the personal finance world, we hear from experts that we need to have a three-month, um, emergency fund or a six-month emergency fund. Some, some even recommend more. This four percent of our annual operating budget amounts to about two weeks. So not exactly the three to six month, um, requirement that we have in our personal life. So it definitely limits our ability to do things that aren't planned, which is why the budget development process, um, requires so much oversight. And then the final classification, which makes up the vast majority of our fund balance, is restricted funds, which is, um, the proper name restricted, uh, not reserves, which we have always kind of colloquially called them. So why have reserve or restricted funds? Um, so imagine there's a world where we are reliant on state education aid and the leadership of that state education aid has repeatedly echoed rhetoric that they might impose, say, twenty percent mid-year cuts. What would that do for a school education system? So what reserves allow us to do is mitigate that risk. So if we were to see a twenty percent mid-year, uh, state aid cut, which has been talked about in length over the last, you know, six to nine months from the governor and the comptroller and the division of budget, that's a five million dollar revenue loss for Penfield. Schools are unique in that we're not like, uh, other municipality. You can't just absorb a five million dollar cost to the second grade like you could, um, like a highway department or something like that, cutback consulting. You have kids, you have a constitution, constitutional requirement to educate those kids. So you can have reserve funds theoretically to mitigate those losses. So that's one of the advantages. Uh, the second is your financial health. So, uh, you know, rating agencies such as Moody's, uh, will always take a look at the district's financial health to give us a credit rating. One of the primary metrics they're looking at is our level of fund balance, specifically reserves. Uh, lower interest rates on borrowing. So when we have a better, robust financial position, better credit rating, uh, we are able to retract from banking lenders, uh, better interest rates, therefore saving the district money. Uh, it is a marker for fiscal stress. So in the next month or two, as soon as the comptroller releases their new fiscal stress designation report, we'll go through that in detail. But the level of fund balance that you have, ipso facto, reserves i- is a marker of fiscal stress. So we always want to have a, a certain amount so we're not generating any points in that scoring system. Future planning, so as we'll get into in a moment. Um, some of the allowed reserves are capital reserves. So they allow us to do future capital planning for, um, not just our building facilities, but also for bus purchases. And then finally, another advantage is stable tax rates. So in a year where hypothetically, stay with me, uh, education aid might not be as robust as in the past. Uh, now local school districts have the tax cap to contend with as well. It wasn't that long ago, twenty years ago, that the state would say, okay, we don't have any money for you this year. Uh, local school boards would go to the community and say, hey, we need five percent, ten percent this year. And they would pass it with the knowing thought that, okay, next year, New York State will come back, give us the money, we can lower the taxes. We don't have that ability anymore. So reserves give us the capacity, the financial flexibility to use, uh, those funds as supplemental revenues so that we don't have to have drastic year-to-year tax variances. So here is a table showing all of our year-end nineteen-twenty as of June thirtieth, uh, restricted fund, year-end fund balances. So I'll kind of just go down the list and, um, give some high-level thoughts on each and then we, we can delve into any additional questions. Uh, the first of which is the workers' compensation reserve. Uh, what this does is specifically restricted, uh, use is, um, to insulate against costs associated with workers' compensation insurance. So about, um, twenty years ago, maybe twenty-five years ago, I forget the actual year, uh, the district, along with Monroe County School, started consortium to pool risk for workers' compensation. In the last handful of years, the net position in that consortium has improved greatly, uh, as outlined in the reserve report. So I don't think we'll see a drastic increase in workers' compensation, um, premiums this year, partly because with the pandemic, um, we actually saw, like we did with health insurance claims, less claims this year, uh, less activity, less opportunity for entry. So typically, our annual premiums around there are about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. And our targeted level of funding has been about a year's worth of premiums. So this is kind of, uh, in the ballpark of what our historical approach has been. Second is unemployment insurance. Uh, if you look in the report, the five-year history of this, you can see that in June, we made a drastic increase into this fund as a strategic mitigation to weather against all the uncertainty that we had in the spring. Um, we'll definitely be able to take a look at this. Uh, there are some questions about whether or not half of, uh, federal CARES Act money is actually going to pick up unemployment costs for us. Other districts are continuing to vet this. There is a hope that that's going to happen. However, the money hasn't, uh, necessarily flowed through. So this will be one that we keep an eye on, um, as we move towards, towards year end. But it's a great resource for us in these uncertain times. The ERS Retirement Contribution Reserve, uh, as we discussed last time, is the, um, the way to mitigate against the employer's contribution cost for the ERS system, the local retirement system. This is another fund that we increased, uh, quite a bit at year-end because back in the spring, the stock market, the equity markets were swinging, um, up and down ten percent a day. So there was a lot of volatility and uncertainty about what the employer contribution rates would be for next year. Obviously, over the course of the last nine months, there's been some stabilization in the equity markets. Um, but as we discussed, that ERS reserve is going up one point six basis points or eleven percent. So it is, it is a drastic increase. So this will represent an opportunity for us to potentially mitigate against that cost for next year or as written in the reserve plan, uh, continue to fund the TRS reserve. So TRS reserve is a brand-new offering from the state legislature. The Board of Education decided to approve the new reserve fund. This, unlike all the other reserve funds, has statutory limits on how much can actually be in it. Every other reserve has always been up, subject to local decision-making. Superintendent of Schools, local school boards determine what is the adequate level of funding. With this reserve, the legislature said, here's the adequate level of funding. So the way it works is that on an annual basis, you can put in two percent of TRS eligible earnings. So that's the seven hundred thousand dollars per year. And last year, up to a maximum of five years, so ten percent over, so two percent for five years, up to ten percent. So that one has a little, uh, ways to go in terms of targeted funding, so we'll keep an eye on that. One thing I want to point out with those first four is those are really our operational reserves. And when I say operational reserves, those are funds, um, available for specific costs that we know we are going to incur. So that's about a little over ten million dollars. It's about twenty-five percent of all the reserves, or when you look at the scope of the budget, about ten percent, um, as, as a mitigation effort. So let's jump down to the reserve for liability claims. So that's about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What that is, is a defense mechanism to ensure against, um, any uncovered, uh, claims that may arise against the district. Um, so we have obviously various insurances, workers' compensation, unemployment. Um, but there could be other claims, um, subject to the course of our normal affairs that we could potentially have cost exposure. The tax surcharge reserve, uh, is a means of mitigating against tax surcharge claims. So particularly in school districts where you have very large taxpayers and maybe not otherwise very large residential base. If you have one large taxpayer that has a surcharge claim, you might have a substantial offset in revenue for that year. So this reserve was authorized by the state as a way to fund against that cost exposure. Uh, currently, in the last couple of months, we've settled three or four, um, pending surcharge claims. We still have another dozen or fifteen or so that are pending. Some are multiple years old now. The current level of funding in this reserve is about sixty-six, sixty-eight percent of the overall cost exposure. So as those cases go to court, uh, we'll continue to evaluate, uh, the adequacy of the funding in that reserve. The Employee Benefit Accrued Liability Reserve, um, sometimes called the EBLR Reserve, is a very specific restricted fund that is only for, um, employee separations that have accruals, uh, entitled to them at time of separation. So this is, um, and I know this has been discussed with the Board of Education, but around the state, there's a lot of confusion about this reserve and that maybe this could be used to fund post, uh, employment, uh, benefits for employees, particularly health insurance. It cannot do that. Um, this is strictly only for those separation costs, which is why we traditionally haven't funded it too, too highly. It's just the level of exposure that we know we have as a district. Uh, and then just jumping down to our three capital reserves. So we have the twenty-fourteen capital reserve for building, buildings, the twenty-sixteen capital reserve for buildings, and the twenty-seventeen capital reserve for buses. As they state, uh, those specific capital reserves go towards buildings, uh, upgrading our, our facilities, making sure we're meeting all the safe, healthy, uh, safe and healthy, uh, compliances that are constantly thrust upon New York State schools with the Office of Facilities Planning. Uh, of that twenty-one million dollars or so in the capital reserves, um, we earmarked, uh, all of that money towards the next project planning initiative that we're scheduling for, uh, next year with the operation center, the purchase of land associated with that. Uh, I should note that those two reserves are both fully funded. We can't put any more money into those reserves. So come May, we may want to have a ballot proposition to create a new capital reserve, uh, to start saving for the next future project. Uh, in the twenty-twenty-two calendar year, we need to complete our next building condition survey. And that always identifies, um, quite a bit of need, uh, in our schools. And then finally, the capital reserve for buses, uh, is what we use to update our bus fleet, um, on an annual basis. So those are the general fund reserves, uh, the total thirty-nine million dollars. Uh, and then I should note that there is also a mandatory reserve for debt service. So this is not accounted for, you know, in the general fund. In the A fund, it's accounted for separately in the V fund, the debt service fund, all on its own. Um, so it's not typically reported with general fund reserves, but I think the board should be aware that it sits out there, uh, as an adjacent asset, um, that really serves no other purpose other than refinancing debt, paying off existing principal and interest. So any questions about the reserve report or anything we discussed, uh, here in these last few minutes before we pivot to our next topic?
Board members, any questions on reserves? All right. Thank you.
Sure. So I just want to discuss a little bit about our, our current budget status. Uh, so you have your treasurer's report in your packet tonight through October, the end of October. However, this, these numbers are updated a little bit as of, uh, just about Thanksgiving. So a little more recent. Uh, we have year-to-date revenues of about seventy-six million dollars, uh, of which, uh, in your packet tonight is the tax collection record. We wind down the local funding, um, section of the year. Collected just under ninety-eight percent of the levy. Uh, for the board's interest, that is just about what we always do. It's always right around that ninety-eight percent level. So in this year, I think that was particularly, uh, interesting to see. Uh, current year expenditures only sit at thirty-one million dollars, but that hasn't hit some of our large semi-annual payments that are coming, coming up here, uh, in the middle of December. But you can see from a cash flow standpoint that we're in pretty good shape for current operations. On December third, the state, uh, issued their state output reports. So this may come as a little bit of a surprise, but this is the first time when the state actually tells us what we're going to get in state aid. It's, it's halfway through our fiscal year. So the last information we had was when the legislature adopted their budget back in April. However, our school year is not over in April. We still have April, May and June, so those numbers are always estimates. Um, so we're always working on estimates, doing our own internal analysis, but until these output reports actually come out, uh, these are the final, uh, numbers. So there was a lot of discussion this year about whether or not these output reports would show a twenty percent reduction. What would they show? Would they show an option for it? And as of now, they show the full amount of aid due to the district, the full amount that we were expecting. Obviously, that could change with a stroke of a pen, but I think it's, uh, an interesting update for the board to be, um, aware of. And then, as I mentioned before, that rhetoric around a twenty percent aid reduction for a district of Penfield size and our wealth profile, uh, would be a five million dollar loss, uh, in operating revenue. So really substantial amount of money. So with that, this is a little bit small, a little eye chart, so I apologize. There has been a little bit of an update around federal aid discussions. So last week, there was a bipartisan, uh, proposal that came out of the US Senate that had about nine hundred billion dollars, um, cobbled together. There were some questions about whether some of that was re-appropriated CARES Act funding from back, uh, in April, how much of it was new money. But it was at least some positive momentum in that it was bipartisan. Uh, there was money, as I pointed to, allocated to state and local governments and also specifically for education, higher education and, um, K through twelve education. The hundred and sixty billion dollars allocated for state, local and tribal governments, didn't specifically say how it would be prorated, but given the population of the state of New York, it would be somewhere around five billion dollars for New York, which just so happens to coincide with the current, um, decrease in income tax receipts that we, they've had through the fiscal year. So it could be interesting. As of this afternoon, there was, depending on the reporting that you read, pessimism or optimism that this could go anywhere. Originally, the House was looking at a two trillion dollar proposal. The Senate was looking at a five hundred billion dollar proposal. Uh, so this sits at nine hundred. Um, a few senators on both sides of the dial have said they won't support any, um, relief package that doesn't have direct stimulus to, uh, to citizens. Uh, there is discussion and contention about the state and local aid piece and also controversy about liability language. That would be potentially contained in the relief package. language that would be potentially contained in the relief package. So it's a little bit more of the hurry-up-and-wait. You know, the conversation is ongoing. I think it is important for the board to be aware that this afternoon, the governor did say in a radio address that he does not expect that federal aid is going to be a panacea for the district's finances. That it's possible in, you know, the course of the next six weeks that he's finally going to have to come to some tough decisions and tough proposals as he cobbles together the budget for next fiscal year. So a little bit more hard information outside of that conjecture. So the tax-based growth factors are out. As I mentioned last time, I was hopeful that these would be out by now. What this is, is the first step in the eight-part tax cap formula. So what this does is essentially account for a new permanent growth in a community. All of the bars in this chart are school districts, component districts in Bosse's 1 and Bosse's 2. So the Monroe County District's on the east and west side. You can see that Penfield is kind of like with our tax collection, just about where we were last year. We've always kind of hovered right around that .75, .8, .7, slightly above average again, relative to all the districts. And the one outlier on the way left actually is dragging up the average. So when you use the median instead, we're actually even a little bit higher than average. So that's a positive development. So what this means in theory, that .75, is that if we were to increase our levy by .75 percent, it would only account for the new growth. And ceteris paribus, everything else equal, if assessments stayed equal and equalization rates stayed equal, which they wouldn't, theoretically, we would just be taxing the new growth and everything else would be equal. So if you combine this, the .75, with the latest CPI data that we discussed last time, kind of trending around 1.2 percent or so, we're getting close to a potential 2 percent tax cap, which we say never happens. But in this particular scenario, that's kind of where things are trending this year. That's not finalized. There's still a potential for different exclusions along the way, but that's where we look right now. What that represents in dollars is about $1.3, $1.4 million in potential new local growth. So any questions on the tax-based growth factors before we pivot over to a quick project discussion?
Board members, any questions?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you.
Sure. So the Facilities Committee met last night to review construction in progress and future planning for the 2021 capital project, which centralizes around our new bus garage and Buildings and Grounds facility. We do have change orders tonight for work associated with the 2018 project and the 2019 project. Both of those projects are really cruising along. In particular, the 2019 project, the high school roofing, track, and turf project is more or less substantially completed. We have picked a vendor. We have sourced the cost for the turf replacement. That'll be brought to the board at the first January meeting for an installation plan of July 2021. And the additions project, cobbles in particular, really is coming together quickly, but the Indian landing work and the Scrivener work, we're all anticipating to be on schedule and ready to go, hopefully for next square. On the 2019 project in particular, as I mentioned, we have the turf coming to the board for approval next month, but we have an additional $2.5 million or so in available authorization. So what this does within the current approved scope of the work is actually start to get a head start on some of the roofing work in this building that we had planned to do in the next project. So we have, for your approval tonight, contract for architect, SCI Design Services, for design services associated with that roofing replacement. It's a substantial amount of square footage on the roof for areas that are coming out of warranty. It shouldn't change the actual timeline of that project because the turnaround at SED right now is very fast. It's about six weeks or so, just because nobody's putting in work. Just a year ago, it was a one-year wait. So it's amazing how things can change. One of the things that we are early considering with the facility's new roofing work is the potential for some partial green roof space. So this would be tentatively in the, on the roofing area right over by the commons, so where we have like the serving lines in that hallway there. It's not a drastic amount of square footage, and we still need to further refine the structural integrity of that space for weight. We have to flesh out the costs a little bit further. But what this specific system is that our Director of Facilities, our architect team, and our construction managers have vetted out, it's a modular design. So it's, the maintenance is great. It insulates the facility to hypothetically save on HVAC costs and be more efficient both in the winter and in the summer. And it's environmental.
Let's buy one, get one free.
So thought we'd share that exciting development. Obviously, nothing set in stone yet, and some more work to do to really kind of refine the plans for it, but exciting possible addition to our roofing space here.
Aren't you going to ask if somebody has any question?
Yes, so, board members, anyone in particular, any questions?
Yes, I do. This is just so exciting. And I know tentative, I heard it, I heard it, I heard tentative. But, thank you. And please thank the committee, too, because we've been talking about this for a long, long time. And yay. And just hearing the fact that it helps with heating and cooling and, and that wasn't even on my checklist when I first started this whole thing. Thanks, Dan.
Yep. Oh, I'm excited.
Just to be fair, though, I want to be transparent. There's no lettuce up there.
Oh.
There's no, there's no garden. But it's a green space, so it really is grasses and such for that piece. So it's a, it's a step, but it really came to fruition from Director of Facilities and Architect that this is a newer module option. We have spoken to, on a regular basis, Alan McNiff and I, with our high school environmental club, who also has been looking at options to be sustainable and be green, and it is unique. So as Dr. Driffl said, there's still a lot of work to be done on weight-bearing and, and cost. When we look at anything green, we're all for it, but it has to be sort of, it's got to be budget-neutral, right? So, just want to be fair, I want to be fair.
Well, and you're being fair, and as well as we need to be fiscally responsible.
Absolutely.
I have not forgotten that, but the fact that it's actually on the agenda is huge.
Yeah, I know. I will, if on sunny days, be frolicking. So, but I think it's very, and kudos to SCI, our architects, and Alan McNiff, and Dr. Driffl, who got the report and said, let's, let's take a look. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions on the budget?
Tell Barb about your idea.
Oh, we'll do that.
Okay, it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that actually concludes superintendent reports. I will, just before I conclude, I will say thank you to Dr. Driffl, who, as you've noticed, as we are heading into the budget season. So I appreciate the, the presentation and the detail, and the simple fact that you started talking about Gatsby, 45, was 54. Yeah, so that was, that was a great start. But I think a lot of detail there, and I do appreciate it. I know that we try the board, and because of the board, the district really does pride itself on being, on being transparent and sharing, you know, exactly what, where our finances are, how they look, as well as when people ask questions, we want to answer as truthfully and as transparently as we can. So, so I appreciate the board's direction with that, and the district will continue to do that as well.
Thank you, Tom.
That really concludes superintendent.
Let me see where we are here.
That super concludes.
That brings us to Section 5A, which is the facility's change orders. You have the list of change orders in front of you, and as recommended, the change orders be approved. May I have a motion and a second to approve the change orders presented in front of you?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we will, we've just heard the annual, the annual report for reserve funding, so this is a, to have a motion to approve that. Board Policy 5630 requires that the Board of Education conduct an annual review of all reserve funds. In addition to this required review, this information is also included as part of the annual budget presentations during the budget process. Regular review of this important aspect of the district's finances is intended to ensure transparency of the process and to assist the board in making the necessary decisions to adequately fund all the reserves, manage the fund balance, and ensure that the, ensure the overall budgetary integrity of the school district. This report, updated December 8, 2020, has been submitted for the board to review. A motion and a second would be in order that the board hereby approves and reserve plan, and presented recommendations and directs the recommendations for the reserves to be incorporated into the 2021-22 budget planning process. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Property tax collection status. As of November, as of November each year, the town tax collectors have finalized their property tax collections for the school levy and remitted all funds collected to the school district and submitted all OLM paid bills to the county. Attached is a status of the Penfield Central School District tax levy authorized by the board August 24th, additions and cancellations to the authorized levy and collections through November 30, 2020. A motion and a second would be in order that the Board of Education approves the 2020-21 property tax collection status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion, motion carries. There we go. Okay, so authorization, authorization to contract with SCI Design Group. On May 21, 2019, the district's voters approved both the general fund budget and a separate capital project for work at various buildings, including roof replacements at various schools along with the track resurfacing and field turf replacement. The first phase of the project is substantially complete, and there is a remaining budget surplus of $2,593,238. The district would like to include the remaining funds to replace additional roofs at the high school within the approved scope of the current project. The scope of the service would include, basically, roof insulation at 14 separate roofs totaling approximately 70,000 square feet, which includes potentially a greener approach, insulation of a green roof at Roof 39, a total tear-off and replacement of the roof above the pool, and preparation of drawings and specifications in form submission to SED. SCI Design has submitted and approved, and approve, I'm sorry. The SCI Design has submitted for approval a proposed, proposal dated November 13, 2020, for the necessary design and construction administrative services for these projects. The total approved remaining project budget was established at $2,593,238. The proposal calls for a fixed total fee of $155,400, which has been provided to the board, and approval is recommended. So I may have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent to negotiate the final terms and enter an agreement with SCI Design for services related to additional roofing to the 2019 capital project as described above.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Contract with Silvian Learning Center. It's recommended that the district is contracting with Silvian Learning Center to provide supplemental educational services on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy. This contract is not to exceed $24,753.60 and will be paid through Title I funding. Students will receive Silvian services at Our Lady of Mercy and all, and at the Silvian retail locations. The program includes acoustic assessments, guided instructions, and progress updates that will be available to parents and teachers and the OLM administration. So I may have a motion and a second. The Board of Education authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Silvian Learning Center on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. The Penfield Medicaid Compliance Program must be certified annually by December 31. The board has reviewed the compliance program self-assessment tool developed by the Office of Medicaid Inspector General. The document has been reviewed by the District Medicaid Compliance Committee, and no substantive changes have been made from prior years. An approval is recommended, so may I have a motion and a second that the board certify, board recertify the Medicaid compliance plan as presented above.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Retention and Disposal Schedule for New York Government Records be resolved by the Board of Education of the Penfield Central School District that the retention and disposal schedule of New York, for New York local government records issued pursuant to Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed therein. Be it further resolved that in accordance with Article 57A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in the retention and disposal schedule for the New York local government records, LSG 1, after they have met the minimum retention period described therein, and only those records will be disposed that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond the established legal minimums, minimum periods. May I have a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Sorry. Any opposed? Motion carries.
So we have three policies for first read. 6212 certification, 6420 employee personnel records and release of information, 6470 staff access to network information resources, and along with that, for a reference, is 6470 R1, the regulation, staff access to network information resources and internet use. So any questions or comments, or does someone from the policy committee would like to speak on these?
I'd be happy to. So we have, these are up online. People can go and look at them and review them for feedback before our next meeting, when we'd look to approve. 6212 is around certification. It removes the requirement for employees to bring in original certificates or licenses for copying and review, and instead states that proof of certification for copying and review and instead states that proof of certification will be obtained through the New York State Teach website. So it really centralizes that, is what all districts are, I think, required to do. And so we are doing that. There's some minor edits. 6420 is employee personnel records and release information, just some relatively minor updates. We consolidated the list of types of staff members to simply read employee, changed employees of the Board of Education to district, and added that former employees' information can be released when requested in writing by the former employee, and then some minor edits. And then 6470, staff access to networked information resources. We really, we just made one change, added to engage in teaching and learning to the reasons the network is provided. That comes with regulations as a reminder to the board and community. Regulations don't need to be voted on by the board, they can be changed by the district. But we always, in transparency, bring regulations to the board as well, and these are online. And we just made some minor changes, added to provide instruction and/or related learning activities when appropriate to the reasons staff are encouraged to make use of electronic media. And that's it for first read.
Any questions or comments on that? It just, in looking at them, this can be very mechanical in nature and not really changing our behaviors.
Yeah, I think the big piece is a reminder that the policy committee is doing a wonderful job on our five-year policy review. And even with COVID, we looked that we, this is our fourth year, I looked at Sharon for that, I believe this is our fourth year of our five-year review, and we are, we are close on track to still being, wrapping up. So you'll see more now that we're sort of getting out of COVID, that these are our routine review checks. So we just bring the, we review lots, we just bring the ones that have to be changed or to get board approval and allow the community to review.
And I think that's an important point. This is not the entirety of what you review, this is only ones that revise.
I think it's a great, yes, this is just the ones that, after they get reviewed by district office personnel, depending on what they're about, like, so the one around networked information resources also got reviewed by our Director of Technology. And then we bring all that to the policy committee and we review many things and only bring the ones that, that need to be changed. I realize I'm getting tired because I literally just restated what you said, but longer. So you got it. A little more authority.
And with that, we have the second reading and approval of the policies 5670, records of management, 6150, alcohol, drugs, and other substances for school personnel. And again, for our reference is 6150 R1, which is the regulation for that. And then 6170, fingerprinting of prospective school employees. Were there any comments or changes with those?
No comments or changes on those.
Okay. So may I have a motion and a second that the above policies be approved as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. And we get to the Monroe County School Board Association meetings and review of what's transpired over the past month. The first one was the Labor Relations Meeting.
Yes, and I attended via Zoom. And the presentation was Labor Relations in Catastrophic Times. And the presenters were the lawyers Donald Budman and Allison Marley from Ferrara and Ferenza. And it was a wonderful overview of, of downsizing process necessary during catastrophic times. The biggest thing was that they noted roughly 80% of, of district costs are staff-related, so staff reductions are a real possibility should state cuts come without relief from the federal government. And the presentation targeted newer members of, of Monroe County School Board Associations that had not been through this process before. They emphasized reductions have a minor, sorry, major effect on employees' lives. Reductions in workforce need to be handled carefully and in good faith to maintain trust and productive working relationships with staff long-term, especially after a crisis has passed. And then went into the specifics of, you know, New York law and seniority. So it was, it was very good. It was a nice refresher for me to hear all that. But I did encourage Sean to like, look at the presentation and, because it is something that if you're not in schools, you're not really aware of, of what all the protocol is.
Thank you, Barb. Any, any comments on that, if anyone? Next is the Information Exchange Committee meeting.
Okay, I guess I will talk about that. So I did, I did attend. It was also via Zoom. And it was, the presenters were talking about, talking about conquering the digital divide. And they were Glenn Vanderwater and Timothy Johnson from Rochester City School District. And they were just talking about what the Rochester City School District did to do just that, conquer the digital divide, I guess. You know, especially when everything happened in March and many of the students were without technology and all of that kind of stuff. So they were just talking about what they did to kind of make sure that they had what they needed in order to be successful in school.
Thank you. Any, any comments or questions? And the last two are Legislative Committee meeting and the Executive Committee meeting. The Legislative Committee meeting was canceled. This was to have some representatives attend and only one representative staffer accepted. So in light of COVID and all that, they did, they canceled that meeting. The, there's a couple of things from the Executive Committee meeting that came out that was, that is, I think, relevant to everybody. And one is that the members have asked for a virtual capacity or capability for all the Monroe County School Board Association meetings. And, you know, they, they are looking into that, but they are dealing with the same issue that, of course, we deal with, they're going to have a in, basically in-room and remote event at the same time. It requires specific hardware and capabilities. Unfortunately, they just have one, one meeting at a time, they just need one set of hardware. But they're investigating that. You know, the upside for that is, again, this is basically, people have to travel during the, usually during lunchtime to go to these meetings and that's a fit everybody's schedule. I think there's the other upside, which is it makes it much easier for us to sort of drop in if there's an interesting topic, you know, you know, it is, again, we're taking our time out from, to travel to the meeting, have a meeting, and we can't do that every week because there basically is one of these every week. But if we, if they put this capability in place, we can drop in if there's an interesting topic. So there's, there's some, you know, again, there's some value to that and, and I'm sure they're looking, they're looking into that and that's what, I think we'll probably end up with that at some point. The, the other thing that I just want to point out that was really interesting was a presentation on bans against bullying. And this was presented by Michael Bryant, who works for M&amp;T Bank, and this, I think this came out of their community engagement, I can't think of the right word, but community engagement that bank wanted to do. It, it's based out of Buffalo, it was, apparently was very successful. It was very, it was a very impressive presentation and it, they want to expand it into Rochester. And he talked about all the aspects of that. And I forwarded you that information from that, from that presentation, as well as a link to their webpage. So there is, you know, this is for schools, this is for students to do. And again, I think it's, it's something that has a real value. It has, it's been successful, has a benefit, and I think it helps community grow and it could help the students grow. So take a look at that. And then the last part is we approved the position papers for unfunded mandates and the constitutionality of school choice. Go back to that. And then as far as district committee meetings, we had the Facilities Committee. Dr. Driffl went over what we, pretty much what we covered there. Catherine, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
No. I think it's been covered.
Pretty well covered.
Yep.
And I'd just say that it reflects, you know, what Dr. Driffl presented and the meetings. It reflects the same long-term approach that we do as far as, you know, our fiscal approach. And they kind of go hand in hand. But, you know, we, they, we look long-term to make sure everything, we, we, we know ahead of time what we need to spend money on to maintain or what our future new needs are. And again, it's, it's a very important aspect of making, making sure we have the resources we need for our students. Is there, there's no unfinished business? Is there any new business? All right. And with that, we entertain a motion and a second that the meeting be adjourned at 9:01 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion adjourned.